Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Meeting for December 17th, 2018. Call upon Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem John Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you all please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call. Oh, yes. I'm -- boy, I totally missed it. My fault. So, we're going to be sitting here first is the Housing Authority. The roll call will be made for the Housing Authority? Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Mark McGough.
Here.
Here.
Okay. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Well, welcome you all tonight, and I figured since this is the last meeting of the Housing Authority for this year, and looking at the ties I see on the gentlemen for the Commissioners here, I should be appropriately retired.
Retired? It's better than the crown you've worn sometimes.
I won't take that any further. We have a fairly brief meeting for you tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Authority, and we'll have two action items for you. And you do have to do the reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Authority, and then we'll have a public comment period.
Okay. Do I have any changes or corrections on the minutes of the Housing Authority for August 20th, 2018? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Is there anybody that wishes to address City Council -- or, excuse me, the Housing Authority with regard to public comments to the Housing Authority? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Report to the Secretary.
I have no separate reports for you, Mr. Chairman.
And no committee reports?
That's correct.
And no unfinished business?
That's correct.
Then we'll move directly to the new business, which is RHA 1801, a resolution adopting a 2019 budget for the administration of a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program.
So, just briefly, this is the budget that you take a look at and we consider annually as we get toward looking at what we'll be doing for 2019. So, there are briefing sheets in there. There are two attachments. One is a summary of all the expenditures we're looking at for the program. We're anticipating expenditures of no more than approximately $4.9 million or $4,888,000. So, the two sheets basically provide you with a brief summary of what we're looking at for expenditures and also what the sources for revenues for these expenditures will be. I'm not going to walk you through all the detail on these particular items. The one thing I did want to point out, you may notice that the amount of this budget is significantly higher than you looked at for last year. What happened is that, as a result of the appropriations process, not the present one, but the past one, we did end up with approximately 500, little shy of $500,000 in additional housing assistance payments authority. That's money that allows us to actually increase the amount of assistance we can make available to low and moderate-income citizens. So, that is a bit of a change in terms of -- you might remember the number, and that's why we're up at about 4.8 or close to 4.9 million this year. And with that, I don't have any other information unless you have any questions, of course, you'd like to address to me.
I'll open it up for council questions or actions. I'll continue to look for council questions. Mr. Jones?
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion. I move that RHA-1801, a resolution adopting the 2019 budget for the administration of Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have RHA 1802, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the Arvada Housing Authority and the Arvada Community Table relating to program administration. Mr. Talbot?
What I would like to do is make an introduction. Ms. Carrie Espinoza is here. She's our Section 8 Program Supervisor for the Section 8 Program, and I invited her to make the presentation and make some brief remarks on this particular item. And, of course, take any questions, if you have any, on it.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening. So, again, the second item is a resolution authorizing the agreement by and between the Arvada Housing Authority and the Community Table related to program administration. This agreement is for the Bridges to Opportunity Program and is in the amount of $32,000. That funding is used to fund a part-time case manager position, as well as to cover some administrative costs for the program. This agreement is annual, and the existing agreement will end on December 31st, 2018. We do value our partnership with the Community Table, and we would like to continue our partnership through 2019. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Fiver?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to reserve the opportunity to make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Marriott, do you have a question?
I do. Could you give us just a quick summary of how many people went through the Bridges to Opportunity Program? How many were successful? How many were not? Kind of just tell us how it went.
Sure. So, we -- through this partnership, we have 25 participants who we are going through the Housing Choice Voucher Program, so they're housed through our housing program and also receiving case management services.
Are those people that already have a Housing Choice Voucher or people who are trying to achieve one?
No. The Community Table refers them to our program. So, they are newly admitted, and once they are housed, then that's really where the case management position is key, because we can house them, but we don't provide those supportive services. So, this case management position, they work with them to furnish their home, those things that, you know, they don't come into this program with. They help them with job assistance by referring them to the Workforce Development Program through the county. They help them with GED services, connecting them with mental health resources if that's what one of their needs is. So, any supportive services that they may need, the Community Table tries to make that connection.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I have -- looking at the agreement here, I have questions on two sections, two paragraphs. Maybe you've got ready handy there, but 5.3 says, "The contribution of $32,000 may be reduced unilaterally by the Authority to any amount in the sole discretion of the Authority. In the event that the Authority decides to reduce any amounts, the Authority would provide a 30-day notice to the Community Table." I'm wondering, under what circumstances would you be reducing that $32,000? And I'm just wondering.
The funding we get, we're using the -- when I say HO-DAG, remember the Housing Development Action Grant Funds. If we were to encounter any sort of situation, we don't anticipate it, obviously, because that was formerly federal funds that was recycled through the HO-DAG loan. If something were to happen that might impact our ability to expend the funding for the program, we wanted to leave the option that we could adjust that funding if we needed to as a result of an action that might impact the amount of money, the 32 grand that we have.
Okay. So, basically, if the -- it's not just a discretionary thing, but if there is some reason that the total funding was reduced, you would have the option of doing that without further consultation?
Oh, yeah. And I think the thought would be, you know, under what circumstances will we do this? Because, obviously, Community Tables rely upon this funding for the program. Certainly, we have no intention of doing anything arbitrary that would be -- that would not have a good reason. So, we'd obviously have a very good reason. We certainly would discuss this with Community Table as to why and the reasons for that and what we could do to adjust. We might be able to take funds from another source and move it. Again, we don't anticipate that, but we thought it's good discretion that the Authority has that opportunity if indeed we have to exercise it.
Okay. And the following section reads, "The Authority shall continue to designate to the program up to a total of no more than 25 vouchers from the Authority's Housing Choice Voucher Program. However, if for any reason any of these 25 vouchers are revoked by HUD, the Authority shall not be obligated to designate the number of revoked vendors -- revoked vouchers." And just, "The Authority shall not be obligated to designate the number of revoked vouchers." I'm just wondering, what does that mean?
What it really means, and I think the wording is a little convoluted, actually. I think it's a good point. But it really means that, indeed, Section 8, again, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, those funds originate from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. If something were to occur, again, similar to what we just discussed, we wanted to basically have that option, that designation of those 25 vouchers, we could pull one or more of those, or all of them, if it was necessary to do so. Again, we certainly don't anticipate that. But, again, it's just trying to look...
Seems like strange language to say, "Shall not be obligated to designate the number of revoked vouchers."
That's a good point. The wording might be a little tortured.
I mean, it seems like that's what it's saying. Just ask that you might look at that language.
I think you have a good point. It is a little tortured.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Carrie, I wanted to ask you, along the lines of what Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Marriott asked, how do you define success in the Bridges to Opportunity Program?
We define success by improving quality of life. The families and individuals that are referred to us, they come from a diverse set of backgrounds. They -- some of them are high-functioning folks that just need some services, and then we have other families who need more intense services. So, we can't hold everyone to the same standard, because there are some families that will just never get there. But if we can improve their quality of life, that's really what we're aiming to do. Whether that's them eventually moving off the program and achieving self-sufficiency, that would be the ultimate goal. But for those who are on disability assistance and just cannot re-enter the workforce, then we look at what we can do to increase their quality of life.
Mr. Fiver?
So, I have a question, then. If there's not any other questions, I'll make a motion.
There are no other questions.
All right. So, the question I have is, remember, we took, I think, the Arvada Community Table took this from Stride, if I remember correctly, about three years ago, maybe now?
Some time back. We did have a self-sufficiency program with an organization at that time called Stride.
Yeah. So, can I ask you, how does that compare to that other organization today? How do you feel the performance has been by contrasting the two or comparing the two?
I think we are on a much better track now. This program is still fairly new this year. We were actually able to enroll close to the full amount of participants that we can take, close to the 25. So, we're still just getting going with this program and seeing some good results. The Community Table is very open to feedback. We have open communication. We're meeting quarterly, which were all things that we did not have with Stride.
And I think if it'd be of interest, and I think it's kind of illustrative, there's a quarterly report, the last quarterly report we had from Community Table, and there's a capsule description for a person that was enrolled in the program, and it describes what I would call relatively dire circumstances for this person. There is a emphasis on this program to look at those who might be homeless, in danger of homelessness, or more typically with some of them, that are paying such an extraordinarily amount of money for their living costs relative to what they're making, that there may be a danger of homelessness. I think that's probably a stress that we have in this particular program. We didn't have as much with Stride. And that kind of gets to the heart of some of the concern we have relative to the homeless in the community.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion, and then I'll speak to the motion. I move that RHA 18-02, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the Arvada Housing Authority and the Arvada Community Table relating to program administration be approved. And also, I just want to firsthand see this program in action. I'm concluding my, I don't know, seven years on the board there as Vice President and handing it to Mr. Jones, who'll be taking over in January for trying to keep counsel part of the organization. Seeing the wraparound services and the level of service and the interest from Gretchen and her team around people for $32,000, keeping 25 people, the amount of money for the big bang you get is huge. It goes far more than what we pay, and I've seen the GEDs. I see the study sessions at night. I've seen the computer labs. I see the support in getting people jobs and resumes done, and all of that from the faith-based, the Community Table, all coming together to give a hand up, not a hand out. And that is the essence of this program, and I've seen it, and I applaud our participation in it, and I applaud the Community Table for doing a lot with very little. And I'm happy to see that we continue to partner with such a great organization in our community that does what we ask and provides us performance measures. What a great concept. So, of course, I'll be supporting the motion.
Yeah, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. And I believe now we can stand adjourned as the Housing Authority.
With one last thing.
Yes, sir. You know, we're not supposed to have public demonstrations here.
[laughing] No, the big man up north couldn't make it, but he asked me to say this to you tonight. We wish you a very Merry Christmas and a happy 2019.
Thank you, Santa.
Santa's helper.
Santa's helper, yes. On that note, thank you, Mr. Talbot. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Meeting for December 17th, 2018. We have already done the moment reflections, pledge of allegiance. Kristin Rush, if you'll call roll as City Council.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Fifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Very good. We have the approval of the minutes of December 3rd, 2018. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. We have some people signed up for public comment. We'll start with Andrew Wynette. And, Mr. Wynette, I appreciate you giving me a phonetic pronunciation of your name. You've seen me enough to know that I can butcher names pretty well.
Actually, I haven't. This is -- I have the pleasure of being my first city council meeting, so thank you for your time. So, thank you for your time and interest in the subject of short-term rentals. I propose that the City of Arvada move to allow short-term furnished residential rentals of less than 30 days in a residential zone. The reason these rentals should be allowed is multifaceted. Short-term rentals are better maintained and have better curb appeal than do most long-term rentals and even many owner-occupied homes. Short-term guests bring vacation dollars to local businesses, eating out local retail stores, local tourist attractions, and much more. Also, owners of short-term rental properties have a vested interest in keeping up their properties, constantly improving, putting the additional revenue earned back into the property. The property is cleaned inside and out, top to bottom, between each and every guest. Paint gets touched up. The yard is meticulously maintained. Windows washed, gutters cleaned, trash picked up, for even one poor review can negatively impact the ability to procure future short-term rentals. Finally, we live in this great country, the United States, where, as Irving Fisher, the early economist, stated, "We should afford people the opportunities to conduct their business and manage their properties according to the highest and best use." Likewise, I also understand that neighbors have concerns over short-term guests. Who are they? What are they doing there? Will they be noisy? Are they conducting illegal business? Well, the short answer is, rest easy. Most guests are simply vacationers, in town for weddings, visiting family, hiking, skiing, traveling nurses, conducting business trips with family in tow. Short-term guests are also locals, renting a home while they remodel a kitchen, closing the sale of another home, or renting a place for family visiting in town. Most importantly, short-term guests have a fastidious dedication to being the perfect guest, because a poor review will immediately result in fines and fees from the owner and will negatively impact their ability to procure a future vacation rental on their next trip. In a rapidly changing world such as ours, it's time to reevaluate the interpretation of the Code Concerning Short-Term Rentals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'll call on Georgia Duncan.
Hello, I'm Georgia Duncan. I live at 6440 Youngfield Street in Arvada. I am speaking in support of a change in Arvada, a change from our present trash collection system to an organized waste and recycling collecting system. I am a member of Arvadans for Progressive Action. I attended the workshop presentation last Monday night here by Sustain Arvada, the city's Sustainability Advisory Committee. I was very favorably impressed by their report. I'm sure those of you who were there were also impressed. With our present system, there are too many trash trucks on our streets, a higher cost for residents who are not in homeowners' associations. There's no incentive to recycle. There are limited extra services like large-item pickup and yard waste pickup. There is increased road damage from all the extra trucks. There's more air pollution, noise, and threats to safety. Our recycling rate in Arvada is only 13% of what is possible. More than half of our residences have no recycling bins. This lack of convenience keeps people from recycling, as does the fact that existing companies charge more for recycling. It's not a part of their regular fee. Surveys done by Sustain Arvada show that 90% of Arvadans want more recycling. The City of Lafayette instituted an organized hauling system and doubled their recycling rate. I realize that instituting a new system will be a lot of work and will be met with resistance, as it was in, what, 2011? But it will be worth the effort to give our citizens lower costs, added services, reduced road maintenance, and improved health and safety. Let's show that we in Arvada are working toward a cleaner, more beautiful Colorado by making the change to an organized waste and recycling system. I wanted to end my mini-presentation with some stirring words about what we do about recycling in Arvada can help solve our national and worldwide trash problem. That's a big order, but it would be nice if it could happen. But last night, I watched the television weekly documentary 60 Minutes, which devoted two of its three segments to the problems of plastic trash, especially in the oceans. I won't go into details about this, but it is a huge gruesome problem. Littered beaches, dying birds, reduced sea life, even inland areas like ours can contribute to the problem if they let plastic waste get into small waterways that feed into larger ones and then to an ocean. But back to Arvada, this only makes it more important that we do something on the local level.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rachel Smallwood, address 6108 Route Court. I just wanted to thank you for our last week's workshop. I found -- I had to leave after the second one, but I found the affordable housing and the organized trash and recycling workshops very informative. And I also appreciated all of your insightful questions and comments, and I'm very excited about moving towards both of those items and seeing where you move in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
Thank you. My name is Eddie Lyons. I live at 5703 Field Street, Arvada. I just want to take a moment of your time to thank you for another job well done this year. Manager, staff, councilpeople, and mayor, I really appreciate it for another job well done and another successful year for Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Okay. Anybody else wish to address City Council during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. We've got four items on the consent agenda. I understand that there's going to be a request to vote on one item separately. We have, for the consent agenda, 2018-642, a resolution adopting the City of Arvada 2019 legislative agenda. Second item is a resolution authorizing the release and subordination of Jefferson County's reversionary interest as to limited areas on certain real property owned by the City of Arvada for construction of West 82nd Avenue, Lydon Road, from Quaker Street to Orion Way. Third item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Felsburg, Holt, and Yulevig for engineering and design services for Ralston Road, Yukon Street to Garrison Street, in an amount not to exceed approximately $1.545 million. And the last one is a resolution approving Change Order Number Three to an Agreement by and Between the City of Arvada and Surveillance One for Professional Services Related to Municipal Security Systems Equipment. Ms. Ford?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we remove item R18-134 from the consent agenda to be voted on separately.
Okay. Motion's to vote separately on that item. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Why don't we do the other three first, if I can have a motion for those three items? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent items R18-135 through R18-137 be approved.
Motion's for approval of those three consent agenda items. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. And then, if you want to make a motion on the other one?
Okay. I'd be happy to. I move that consent agenda item R18-134 be approved.
Motion's for approval. Ms. Ford, do you wish to speak to the motion or not?
No. No, Mayor. Thank you.
All votes are cast. That passes six to one with Ms. Ford voting no as to the resolution adopting the City of Arvada's 2019 legislative agenda. Next, we have a couple of resolutions versus Resolution 18138, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between Arvada and the Old Town Business Improvement District for the fiscal year 2019 Programs and Services in Old Town, Arvada. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This memorandum of agreement summarizes the business relationship between the city and the Old Town Business Improvement District. This is a one-year agreement, which will allow the city to evaluate the bid's performance prior to considering an allocation for 2020. The city funds that are part of this will be used to support the bid, to support public programs and services, including enhanced maintenance, public safety, and event support. The city services, other than what is funded, are defined by the baseline -- excuse me, baseline services document that is broken down by the services that each of the departments will be providing. We believe the memorandum of agreement provides the foundation for a successful collaborative relationship with the bid. And I would like to point out that we have had the benefit of a very strong, ongoing relationship with the bid. On approximately a monthly basis, I meet with members of the bid board. We've had our staff that has been supporting the bid services. Allison Tremley in our Aida Office has been providing some services following the departure of the Executive Director. Members of the bid board are here tonight, and staff very enthusiastically recommends the approval of this resolution and the agreement.
I see several representatives from the bid board. Anybody like to address City Council on this?
Hello, my name is Mike Higgins. I'm the president of the bid board.
I see you wear a respectable jacket to City Council. That's very appropriate.
Well, thank you. I don't know where I got the idea from. So, real quick, I would like to take the time and just kind of give some updates of the bid. In recent years, we've expanded this year the board from seven to nine, and over half of those are new members, all business owners in Old Town, Arvada. We are in the process of hiring a new director. We have some great candidates. Hopefully, this week, we will be settling on that, one of the two candidates that made the finals. Some of our notable accomplishments of 2018... Some of our notable accomplishments of 2018 was we hosted our most successful event ever in history, and that was St. Patrick's Day of '18. We also are almost finished but launching a new Old Town Passport app. We erected our first public art, which is a mural over on the Twelve Volt Tavern, to show an example of public art that can be displayed here in Old Town. And we adopted our new mission and vision statements, first time for the bid to do that. So, 2019 operating plan and budget proposal covers marketing, communication, and events. We increased that to $55,000 this year. Public improvements and placemaking, which we made substantial efforts in, moved that up to $50,000. Maintenance at $10,000, advocacy $95,000, safety $5,000, and admin $5,000.
Very good. We appreciate the work of the board. And I will entertain a motion. Mr. McGough or questions? Any?
Yes, I have a question. First of all, this question for Mr. Devon. The memorandum of understanding indicates there's, the city will designate one staff member to work with the bid board to help ensure ongoing communication and program implementation. You indicated you've been meeting with them once a month. Are you this person?
No. At this point, I'm not sure we know who that person is. It's been Jessica, it's also been Allison Tremly, so, but I've been part of the group that has met with the bid on a monthly basis.
Okay, but that communication is obviously happening with
Right.
the CEO of our organization, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Mike, I had a few questions on the operating plan.
Actually, why don't we, how do you want me to do this, Mr. Devon?
Is that for the next one?
Can I go ahead? That's the second one. Do you want to?
Agreement first.
Yeah, separate item.
Okay, so when we get to that, we'll, you'll be called back up here shortly, or just hang out there and we'll vote on the first one, then you'll, very good. Do I have a motion on the R-18-138? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R-18-138, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the city of Arvada and the Old Town, Arvada Business Improvement for the fiscal year 2019 programs and services in Old Town, Arvada be approved.
Ms. Ford, did you have a question on this one as well?
No.
Okay. Okay, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Next, we'll consider resolution 18139, a resolution approving a proposed 2019 operating plan and budget of the Old Town, Arvada Business Improvement District. Mr. Devon, do you have anything else to add on this one?
Well, I'll make this quick so we can, so Councilmember Ford can ask her question to Mike. This is a document that is required by state law, and it incorporates the Old Town Bid Strategic Plan that was developed by the board earlier this year, and staff supports the operating plan and recommends approval.
Okay. Ms. Ford, some questions?
Mike, in the operating plan, I noticed that a couple of the items are listed as appropriate. And I wanted to ask you, what does that mean as appropriate? Will you be, is that based on a decision by the bid, or is it based on a document, or how do you know if it's appropriate or not?
Well, one of the things where we put that as alignment in a couple of those areas was since we're in between directors, we would like to leave, say, you know, the strategy of placemaking and whatnot, an area to where we can adjust that, because we've had some thoughts that came from our previous director on how to move forward with that. And we assumed that our new director would take that and go with it, but if there's some other fresher ideas, we'd like to have the flexibility to exercise those ideas within this year.
Okay. And then another question that I had that is related to that is in, let me just see if I can find it. In some of the, I don't know if I identified exactly where it is in the document, but you talk about, and I know there has been some discussion about the potential of increasing the bid district to either south or north. And, you know, in making that decision, not that you're necessarily making it now, but where in the plan, what would be your guiding determination if, for something like that to occur? In other words, what would you base that decision on as far as, you know?
The, that subject did come up this year at one of our board meetings, and when it was proposed to make that type of expansion, whether it was to the north was what we were specifically looking at, it was shot down. But some of the ideas that came up to make that expansion is the type of businesses that we're developing there. We have a couple of newer restaurants that have developed there in the last couple of years that we feel that would be included, would be a good representation of the expansion of Old Town and Old Town's feel.
Okay. And then I had another question on the vibrancy. Let me see if I can find it here.
First page.
First page?
First page of the operating plan.
Yeah, the Old Town Vibrancy Stakeholder Committee. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit, because I'm a little confused between the study, you know, the actual Old Town Retail and Vibrancy Study that was conducted, and then, and then, you know, there was a retreat that was done that was sort of like that study as well. And I was wondering what the plans of the Old Town bid were in terms of that study, the stakeholder, or the, excuse me, the retreat summary, and then where's that going in terms of the Old Town bid? In terms of how it's, how they're being utilized, and what's the end goal for those studies?
Okay, for the vibrancy study, I will have to admit that I was not as involved as some of our other, as some of our other board members were involved. I would like to extend that opportunity for...
He's putting out a lifeline.
Putting out a lifeline, yes. But for the retreat, I can answer the question that is, you know, when we developed the, you know, our thoughts and ideas of the strategic plan through that retreat, that's also when we developed our mission statement and our vision statement, and really tried to unify the new board on the goals and whatnot of Old Town and the businesses of Old Town, and how we could better Old Town. So, going forward, we have been practicing some of the stuff that we've discussed at the strategic plan in sense of focusing more on the placemaking and some of these newer projects that are new to us, that we think will be more long-term projects of Old Town versus events management and smaller projects that we've been doing in the years past.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there someone from the board can give a little bit more insight on the vibrancy issue?
Maybe. I was involved in the vibrancy study a lot, and I've thought about it. I don't, I'm not really exactly sure where you're going with that, Nancy. What are you asking directly about the study? How we can?
Well, I think what I'm really asking is, is when the bid is making decisions. And I think that one of the, as we've seen this past year, we've had a lot of new members on the bid. And so, in looking at the direction of the bid and where it's going in the future, my main question is really, what, what will you be basing decisions on? Will they be, you know, based on some type of a document that, like a marketing plan, or a strategic plan for the, for the Old Town bid? Because as I read the, as I read the operating plan, and I look at, you know, I see a lot of statements in it, as I have in, you know, the business improvement, retreat summary, also the mention of the vibrancy study. And I personally would like to see the bid identify some type of something, whether it's a document, that's going to be the guiding aspect for the decisions that are going to be made. And I'm specifically thinking about those potential future decisions about expanding, why we would expand or why we would not expand. You know, as I look at the, as I look at the, let me just get it here, because I don't, a lot of documents here. You know, as I look at the vision, you know, setting, especially the last part, setting the stage for an authentic experience, those are types of thing, you know, I'm not quite sure what's meant by an authentic experience, because to me, authentic means real. So how does, I don't know what that means, really, as it relates to Old Town. So, the reason why I'm asking the question, is I'll repeat it again, so you're clear, and I'm clear too, is what is the basis for the decision-making that will take place? Is it just whatever happens, you know, whoever's on the committee now, and whatever they come up with? Or are you basing it on something that's going to be around for a while, that these ideas have been really vetted, you know, looked at, and hashed?
You know, Nancy, the bid itself has been on its own just pretty recently, and without getting into details on that, we were left with some documents that some of us and some of us did not agree with, and thought that needed to be revisited and redrafted. One of those documents was our bylaws, which we think we have pretty much ironed out, but for documents that's going to really dictate our decision-making going forward, that has yet to be really kind of decided. You know, though I wasn't part of the vibrancy study, I did do a couple of field trips to other districts that had bids and BDAs, and trying to draw parallels to the similarities and differences of each of those districts and towns, it was very, very abstract in a sense, because it was just, their budgets were way larger, their partnership levels were way different than what we have, and I think we're still trying to get a better stronghold on that. Right now, our budget comparatively to some other towns, Cairo Springs, for example, is so minute that really, we, we're restricted on what we can do with that budget. So, yeah.
But I do want to kind of remark on the vibrancy study, because I was involved in that, and because I've been here for 14 years. I would love to see us continue to work with the city, to kind of look at that more and have more input put from the people that are down there. We have our finger on the pulse. It's our life. It's our investment of all of our time and money. And I think that the vibrancy study could really help a lot if we look at that, like Mike is saying, that we're looking at other areas and things. So collectively, as a board, the bid board, we bring more than just kind of a, most of them are not brand-new to the business, to be, being small business owners. Most of us have been around the block a few times. And I think that collectively, we bring a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, but we also are very, very vested in what goes on down there. So it's not, we don't have an exact formula. I think we're working on that, because the bid has kind of, it's morphed, and it's going to continue to morph into whatever it is. But we have a lot of dedicated individuals, and so I think it's, I think you're asking about, like, do we have a formula that we'll be looking at and using to implement? I don't know if that's ever going to work with us entrepreneurs, to be honest. That's why we have our own businesses. I always say that if I was ever employed, I'd probably get fired. So, but my daughters don't do that. I try. So I hope that answers your question a little bit.
It does, a little bit, sure.
Mr. McGough?
Yeah, thank you. As I read the operating plan, I too focused on the Old Town Vibrancy Stakeholder Committee. All I want to say is, whatever that committee is, however it's comprised, it's doing a great job. Old Town is certainly vibrant. It's busy with a variety of activities, and thank you to the bid and to the vibrancy stakeholder committee. Great job.
Thank you. Great. I need a motion. Mr. Jones?
I would love to make the motion. I move that R-18-139, a resolution approving a proposed 2019 operating plan and budget of the Old Town, Arvada Business Improvement District be approved. I just want to speak to the motion, and really, it's just to say thank you to the Old Town businesses for the work that you're doing. You know, the Christmas tree lighting and the lawn job, that felt to me like one of the biggest crowds that we've had in a long time. And there was just this buzz in Old Town. And I'm hoping that the businesses were the recipients of that buzz. But thank you very much for putting those kinds of events on and creating an Old Town that's just a fun place to be in.
Mr. Fiverr?
I just want to say the maturity of the bid and, you know, coming from HODA to the bid and that whole transition, the maturity and the depth of professionalism and governance has, I think, gotten really good, and I'm really happy to see where it's gone. I, you know, I remember from 2006 and '07, when I was down there, and where you guys are today is just hands over fist, just lots of improvements. You know, it's, it's exciting to go to Old Town, but it's frustrating because it's so packed, you know? So it's like kind of that, that thing. I tried to get to the sock store twice this weekend, and I couldn't find parking. And then I, you know, I finally, you know, got to the garage in my big truck, which that's a whole nother problem. But, you know, that's a, that's a good problem to have, and I'm excited to see you guys doing great work out there. So thank you. And I hope your holiday season's awesome for all of you.
Ms. Miller?
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Fiverr will never get frustrated with not being able to find parking in Old Town. I remember being a council, or the city, the chamber president, and I was the only car on the street all day, every day. So I just wanted to echo, great job. You guys are fantastic. And thank you, Ms. Tremley, for stepping in and being the executive director with the other 14 jobs you have at the city. So you guys are fantastic, and we appreciate you, and I will absolutely be supporting this.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I want to say thank you to the Old Town Business Improvement District members, and that it's a pleasure to work with you. I really enjoy it. And, you know, it's, it's just a wonderful thing for our city that we have a lot of small business there in Old Town. And there's a lot of great ideas going forth, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you have for the future. And I also want to thank the city, too, because the lights this year were really, really dynamic. They were really fun. And I think that Old Town looks terrific. It looks bright and cheery and very Christmasy. And so, I wish you guys a lot of success in this season.
Very good. Ms. Ford, if I can get your vote inputted? Yeah, I'll certainly be supporting the motion. It's a, you know, for those of us who've been around for a while, to try to get the bid started in all those years where it didn't happen. And what I really appreciate, and I know others appreciate, is that you, as business owners and as property owners, really stepped up to the plate, and you continued to demonstrate great love for your area of town and your businesses. We applaud your entrepreneurial spirit. And it's, it's easy to take pride in Old Town as truly one of our crown jewels, and you all are, are great stewards of it. So thank you all for what you're doing down there. And, yeah, Scott, I do like your jacket, and if I can maybe borrow it, I'll let you know.
Let me get your story.
That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
On behalf of all the business owners of Old Town, thank you very much.
Good. Next, Mr. Marriott, motion on?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one action on first reading tonight, and so I'll move that Council Bill 18-055, an ordinance authorizing a second agreement to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and the city and county of Denver, acting by and through its Board of Water Commissioners, Denver Water, for the purchase of water, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for January 7th, 2019 at 6:15 PM.
Okay. Motion's for approval on first reading. Note that this will be the first opportunity we have, if we can be efficient, to start our public hearings at 6:15. our public hearings at 6:15. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18052, an ordinance authorizing an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to establish the West Metro Drug Task Force. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is essentially an agreement that represents changes in federal requirements for asset forfeitures for the funding of the West Metro Drug Task Force. And it requires that the IGA that governs that task force be amended to provide that one agency serve as the fiscal agency for the task force and incorporate a few other changes to comply with revised federal requirements. Our city attorney's office looked at the, at the IGA and working with the other agencies, made these changes in order to keep the West Metro Drug Task Force operational. It is an extremely vital task force to dealing with drug-related crimes and issues in the West Metro area. And so we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, quick question, maybe I didn't see it or understand it. Was the fiscal agent, who is the fiscal agent? Is it the?
Jefferson County sheriffs.
The sheriffs, okay. That's who the fiscal agent will be?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's not any questions, I can make the motion.
You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 18-052, an ordinance authorizing an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to establish the West Metro Drug Task Force be approved on final reading number 4668 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Mr. Daley, I assume you'll continue to monitor the court decisions that are coming out with regard to seizures.
Yes, that's correct.
Seems to be a changing landscape on that issue. Next, we'll open the public hearing on an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2018. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Director of Finance, Brian Archer, who will present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Archer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since this is our last meeting of the year and I haven't had the opportunity to wish each and every one of you a happy holidays, I hope you are enjoying your time that you get, which I know is not a lot, to spend with the ones you love the most. So, on to the most exciting thing of the night, I am certain. We're going to talk about budget. Thanks, Doc. So as you can see, each year, we have kind of four things throughout the year that we do with our budget. One, we pass the budget for the next year through ordinance, usually in October. And so this budget was passed in October of 2017. Each year, we come to City Council with a carryover and a cleanup. That usually happens in April. Per Mr. Devon's direction, we have changed that to also make that an ordinance, which basically resets the budget in April. Throughout the year, we bring to you resolutions. Those are one-offs, can be items like grants that we didn't know we were going to receive or extra money that we maybe want to spend during the year that we need council's permission. And then finally, the cleanup ordinance, which happens each December, which wraps everything up and puts a bow on it. I did add this chart this year for one reason and one reason only, and that is to show you that we did not come to City Council at all for any resolutions. Now, that could be a good thing and a bad thing. In some years, we can have as many as 15. Most years, we have somewhere between three and five. Good thing, that means we did a wonderful job doing our budget. At least, that's what I'm going with. Bad thing, that means we did not get any grants throughout the year that we needed to bring to City Council. So we are working hard on trying to change that and you will actually see some grants coming to you in the beginning of the new year. What you will see is our current budget sits at $247 million approximately. Tonight, we are asking you to adjust that budget by approximately $7.5 million for a final total of $254,674,688. Each request has an offsetting revenue source or we have sufficient fund balances in our reserves to cover. None of these items are dipping into our reserves or causing an issue with any of our tenure models. Quickly to run through each one of these, in the general fund, the larger items are, and City Council should remember this from our budget presentation, approximately $1.5 million to get started on the Parks Maintenance Building. If you remember, we are going to cash finance this and so we would like to get started. $611,000 for the purchase of additional police vehicles. That was part of our police presentation and they have, would like to get these ordered. Approximately $263,000 for items related to Arvada events. This seems like a large number, but this is all related to the transition and timing. Each one of those items has been reviewed previously with City Council. This is mostly a cleanup. $500,000 for JPPHA. We're excited to continue the progress on that and to update that they have a successful RFP and we'll be coming to you to talk about that. And then $150,000 of various items, including some temporary wages, some additional outside legal counsel, some licensing for some software, and the contribution approved for the Jeffco Action Center. Next, we need to adjust our community development fund by approximately $800,000. $600 going to the items listed up there. Couple of those items you're very familiar with, including the Old Town restroom and some Section 8 housing. $208,000 additional money added for the Car Street Sidewalks, which was a wonderful program where we were able to use funds from multiple sources, including HODA funds and CDBG money. That has been an ongoing project and City Council should recognize that as one that we've been working on for the past few years. An additional $1 million in the housing fund. I'm surprised Mr. Talbot didn't do backflips over this, but they were able to get additional funding from the feds that was enabling them to go from a low of about 470 residents that we were able to help and push that number back up to just under the 508 that were allowed. I think they're currently sitting at about 506. So that was really a wonderful thing that they were able to get done. We do have to ask for the additional dollars, even though this will be offset by the additional grant revenue. You will see again, items related to police vehicles. This is in the Police Tax Increment Fund, their contributions to the purchase of these new vehicles. And it's set offset by grant revenue and the grant revenue is over $143,000.
I think we would have had an elected official from another jurisdiction come and present testimony in opposition to unmarked police cars, but.
I think you're correct. No comment. A million dollars related to the outstanding claims. This may look like we're rebudgeting for this item and we are, as we're continually working on getting the roofs put in. Some of this carried over from '17 into '18 and I'm telling you, some of this will carry over from '18 into '19. So I do apologize, but we will be bringing this to you again next year as well. And then some items related to computers. This year and into next year, the computer department program is rolling out all new computers, all new servers for our operations. And so this is some pieces. They were able to do some items a little bit early. So while this funding was programmed in 2019, their ability to be very efficient enabled them to spend some of these dollars early. And so we're coming to City Council to clean that up a little bit. And then you will also see some items on here that dollars have been set aside for many, many years and then we've been able to actually purchase. So for example, the point-of-sale system at the Pro Shops, when they replaced Westwoods, they went ahead and updated both at Westwoods. And then when they remodeled Lake Harbor, they went ahead and replaced that system there as well.
Ms. Ford, do you have a question?
I just, I just wanted some clarification on two things under the Computer Replacement Fund. That $415,000 that was scheduled for 2020, was that because they got a better deal?
Absolutely. Yeah, it was, they were able to get, to cut that by almost 30% to be able to purchase the equipment today.
That's great.
Yep.
And very small amount of money, but on the ShoreTel phones, when I first read that, I thought, I hope they replace them with different ones.
It is a small line item, but it enabled us to update some phones that were, needed some additional technology.
Okay. And I just want to wish you and your wonderful family a Merry Christmas too.
Thank you very much. What you will see here is unfortunately, the duplication of the transfers that come from the general fund and the TI fund to actually purchase the vehicles. And so Councilmember Dyer's not here, but he would remind me each year that this is poor budgeting, but it is required by government standards. And so this is a repeat, but it is money that has already been budgeted.
Very good. Mr. McGough, is there a question?
Yes, I did have a question when I looked this over. 12 vehicles for that amount of money, it's nearly $60,000 per vehicle. Is that because these are some specialized vehicles?
So I apologize, that includes purchasing of the vehicle and outfitting it. So it includes all the technology that goes into the vehicles and all the equipment that goes in. And so each vehicle averages between $20,000 and $30,000 of just technology and equipment.
Okay, so this is not just a purchase?
Not just the vehicle, yep.
And the other from the tax increment funding, we have two unmarked vehicles and they're nearly $135,000 apiece.
Those are more specialized and they include.
Because they don't have the painting on the side?
We have to pay extra to take that off, yes.
Should be, oh, I see, it costs more money, okay.
No, those have additional equipment requirements. And so they're a little bit larger vehicles and have a little bit more equipment in them.
Vehicles used to be fairly reasonable. They're not.
They're quite expensive today, but the expectations of our police force is quite high, so.
Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are other questions.
I don't think we're done. And we have to open it up for public comment, so. Ms. Miller, question?
Oh, wait till he's done, sorry. I thought you were just done too.
I'm done.
Ah, well, now you're done. Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Now I'll open up for City Council questions or action. Ms. Ford, did you have another question?
No, I was going to reserve the motion.
You've reserved the motion? Mr. Pfeifer?
So just a quick question. I know that some of the strategy around the police vehicles, we buy in black because the resale value is higher than black and white or just white. Are we, do we take into account that these 12 vehicles coming in, do we get the credit for selling the older ones?
We do. So as part of the Vehicle Maintenance Fund, when they sell the pieces of equipment, whether it's a police vehicle or a tractor, those funds are deposited back in and offset the future contributions that are made to the fund.
Onto the vehicle fund, but we never, do we ever see those, that revenue stream?
You will see it during the budget process. It's part of one of the line items, but we can certainly call it out in the future if you'd like.
I was just curious because, you know, we all sit here and we see $700,000 or dollars, but you don't realize that you might get $150,000 back.
We average anywhere from $270,000 up to $500,000 per year that we get back, depending on what we sell.
On the vehicles, right, yeah. I think it would be not a bad idea because it does offset the purchase of new ones.
We'll make sure to point that out.
And I don't know if we realize it because I know there was a whole strategy on why we did what we did with those cars.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Archer, thank you so much. Could you back up to the Community Development Fund slide for a moment? So we spoke generically about more money for human services and this says allocation of $600,000 for the combination of it and includes human services grants, but that doesn't include the money that we'd like to see allocated to human services, correct?
That is correct.
And is there, I don't know what the timing looks like or how that works, but is that something that we've thought about allocating for next year?
Yes, that's part of the.
I know we said one-time funds for this year, but next year?
Yes, part of the communication that will go into next year's budget. And these funds that are listed up there are predominantly the HODA funds. Mr. Talbot spoke about those a little bit earlier. And I certainly know that we revisit the HODA funds every year with the budget. And so we will pass that communication on, for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Ford, you may make your motion.
Mayor, before I make the motion, I would just like to say one thing, that we have a lot of employees of high integrity in this city. And it gives me great pleasure that one of them happens to be our finance director. And it just, I want to thank you, Brian, because it means a lot to us here on City Council.
Thank you.
And now I move that CB-18-053, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2018, be approved on final reading numbered 4669 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. I will certainly echo what's been said previously in appreciation for Mr. Archer and frankly, his entire team. We've got a great finance department. So that passes seven to zero. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18054, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This, this ordinance is presented to you in order to make our city code consistent with changes in state law. Earlier this year, the state recodified the entire Colorado Revised Statutes related to liquor laws after passage of House Bills 18-02, 1025 and 1026, which reorganized numerous provisions within the Colorado Revised Statutes. The changes to Chapter 6 of our code required the recodification and it will not really, it will not modify the regulations associated with the sale of alcoholic beverages here in Arvada. It really doesn't make any substantive changes to how we do business in terms of regulating alcohol and liquor licenses. However, these changes are necessary in order to make our ordinance consistent with state law. So therefore, we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
If there's not any questions, I'll make the motion.
Mr. McGough, do you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. I'm just wondering what the new laws that go into effect that allow the sale of beer in grocery stores, is that having an impact on our liquor authority or the laws, regulations?
Mr. McGough, if we can answer that. The first change in kind of a series of changes that take place in the new Colorado Revised Statutes related to liquor enforcement that begin on January 1st, 2019 are, excuse me, strictly with respect to the conversion of what was formerly referred to as 3.2% beer to the use of the designation Fermented Malt Beverages, or FNB. That is an automatic change that happens by operation of law, does not change anything in the substance of the ordinance. It just becomes effective as of that date.
As I noticed that, for example, in the general provisions, alcoholic beverages shall have the meaning set forth in Colorado Revised Statutes, et cetera, as amended from time to time.
Yes.
So just whatever that happens to be.
Yes, Mr. McGough. And that was, that was the, actually the specific reason we chose that language is so that we mirror the state statute from here forward and don't have to make constant changes. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Council Bill 18-04, excuse me, 054, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages be approved on final reading number 4670 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? That passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Chase Bank at Candelas Preliminary Development Plan, generally located at the northeast corner of West 91st Place in Candelas Parkway. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Spintana Planning Manager will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for a single-story 3,470-square-foot building with an ATM drive-through. The applicant is requesting one modification from development standards to place the building 85.7 feet from the center line of Candelas Parkway, when the Land Development Code requires a 100-foot setback along arterial streets. Staff does recommend approval of the PDP with the requested modification based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the PDP at their November 6th meeting. I have received the signed posting log and affidavit and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions and Jeremiah Bebo is also here from staff to answer any questions.
Very good.
This is cause of the issue.
Yeah. The posting log and affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone who wishes to testify in this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. The applicant would like to make a presentation.
Ms. John, I'm Glenview, Illinois. We're in architecture. We are architects of record of Chase Banks nationwide. This particular project is located at. This particular project is located at Candelas Parkway and 91st Place. The first thing that we'd like to talk about is the economic development and that Chase is bringing to Colorado in general, and to the city of Arvada, contributing and investing in skills, boosting small businesses, supporting financial health, building and thriving communities. And you can also see in that picture the concept of the interior of the Chase branch in Arvada. Chase is also bringing in banking loans in the state of Colorado. In 2017, it brought $4 billion financing small businesses in the amount of $565 million in 2017. Consumer customers, business customers in the city. We've donated nonprofits for a couple of billion, and financed local nonprofits and government in the state in 2017 for $2.5 billion. The good news is that there will be more access to loans and to any kind of opportunity. We also are going to talk about now the site. I'm sorry. The site is 1.3 acres, and it has 45% of open space. The lot has three frontages, Candelas Parkway at west, 91st Place at south, and Kendrick Street, which is a private road that accesses the Chase branch site. We also have a great access in terms of pedestrian traffic. It's accessible from both Candelas Parkway and 91st Place. The vehicular access will be only through Kendrick Street. The pedestrian spine and hardscape treatment connect the building along Candelas Parkway and 91st Place. The site will be overlap graded and will maintain the existing grades as much as possible. The majority of the site is proposed to drain from west to east and enter a proposed landscape area inlet where flows will be transferred via existing storm's infrastructure to a regional pond for water quality treatment. The remaining flows enter either Candelas Parkway or 91st Place, and then they're routed to a pond for treatment. The proposed use and the characteristics of the design, we're using materials that evoke local texture materials, like stone-based brick. Eiffes will work together with aluminum and glass in order to create an architecture that is very close to America's very own Frank Lloyd Wright. The visual interest and compatibility of the colors and windows and architectural detailing with the building articulation and height in plan will be harmoniously coordinated to come up with a beautiful aesthetic building. The entry will be defined by storefront and canopy, walls to the sides. The colors are earth tones. The mechanical equipment will be screened and visited from public streets, no ground level, as well as the utility feeds and mirrors. Landscaping will be a combination of the seed, cover, and native seed mix. The height of the building, the tallest point is 26 feet 4 and 1/2 inches, facing Candelas Parkway. The building architecture addresses all four sides, using stone-based face brick and exterior insulation with Eiffes system to ensure a high-quality and enduring character. That gives you the idea of how the building looks like. And the conclusions are that this project will bring economic growth and opportunities. The site will benefit from appropriate planning and sustainable development. The proposed use will generate financial resources for entrepreneurs, small businesses, and many other financial possibilities. The site will become a magnet of progress for the area. The site plan integrates the other areas in development, providing the community with their banking needs. The aesthetic elevations and building in general will enhance the beauty and character of the community. The positive influence of economic business development will have a great impact on the growth and progress of the area and the whole community of Arvada. This project is anticipating a groundbreaking in early spring of next year. Do you have any questions?
Let's see if, do we have any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Let's see if there's any questions. Mr. Jones?
I have a couple of questions, also reserve the motion.
You may.
Thank you very much for the presentation, just a couple of questions. I'm curious, the drive-up canopy is separated from the building. Is that for just ATM services, or does that also include for personal banking back and forth?
The drive-up canopy is a remote drive canopy, and it's just for ATM.
Okay, and so, that was the decision to separate it from the building, since there wasn't going to be any banking going on?
Yes, that's one of the things with future banking right now. All these elements of banking are being pulled apart because of the different needs. In the past, the drive-up canopy was just next to the building or part of the building, but in this case, the drive-up canopy is remote.
Okay, and then, normally, parking is an issue. This feels overparked.
Yes, and I have our civil engineer here who can help me answer that question, but use may change in the future. Also, the future of banking is something that Chase is very concerned about. And as you can see in the slides, I'm sorry, I breezed through them too fast, but the atmosphere, the interior atmosphere now is completely different. There's a living room inside, we have the booths. People, clients, customers can come in, surf the web, learn about their banking possibilities. They can talk to the bankers and come up with whatever needs or answers for their questions. So, the idea of banking now is evolving. For example, back there to the left, you see those two ATMs. Those are two freestanding ATMs. In the past, the ATM was either through the wall or in a room. Now, it's just part of the space. So, the whole idea now is like there has to be this interaction to conduct business, because the whole idea is that in business, everybody's in partnership. The person lending the money, or the institution lending the money, as well as the entrepreneur, like the lady who was here before she said it in a wonderful way. She said entrepreneurs were different. We learn, we know how to do it, but we go around it in a different way. So, that's what this design tries to address. Like, there are many different ways of doing banking, and every single aspect of this interior design will address that, as well as the exterior, like the remote drive-up. In some cases, we also have the remote drive-up, and we have ATMs through the wall. It depends on the need, it depends on the location. But for this particular location, Chase and we all worked together, and this was the most appropriate solution for this site.
Okay, and if the engineer wants to speak to the parking issue?
Yeah, so the building was a little bit... Like the slide said, about 45 landscaping already, over the 25... And to Johnny's point about the future use change, if it ever turned into a restaurant, then the parking would increase, the parking count right now. I think it's a little bit less than what a restaurant requires. And so, developers usually try to put in as much parking as possible, as long as they're meeting all their landscape requirements, and in this case, we are.
Okay, and if you could state your name for the record?
Oh, Jake McMillan.
And your address?
Cloud Peak, Littleton.
We're going to get these batteries changed on the, maybe?
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that explanation.
Yeah.
And I guess I appreciate the forethought.
Ms. Ford?
My question was answered, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, I'm still stuck on the parking because you over-doubled what we needed. I think it was 18 spaces, you did 43 spaces. If you didn't do, say, the six spaces and knocked it down to 30, whatever, math is not working for me right now, I'm looking to my peers to save me, but 30-some-odd, you wouldn't need an exception to the setback rule. So, you still would double your parking, but you wouldn't need a setback. I wouldn't think you would need the extra 13 feet, or take away the 13 feet.
Check, check.
Check, oh, check, okay, sorry. You have a setback that we're from? Candelas Parkway, 91st, and so...
Can we put in the budget some new batteries?
Microphones.
Microphones.
I want gold-plated ones. Just put the golds on, singers.
If you look at the site, we do have some requirements that are trying to meet that include the clear width for the emergency vehicle. And so, we have our, and we also have, we just have minimum standards that we were trying to meet with our site in terms of parking stall width, landscape width, area that we needed for drainage to the east off Kendrick Street. And so, an extra, I think we're around, what, 15, 20 feet from being compliant with that. It would propagate throughout the entire site, and you can see our dimension strings from east to west that it would affect either one of the other requirements that are required by code, mainly probably being the emergency vehicle route through the site.
We'll come back to that, it's emergency vehicle, I don't understand how the front tires go like this a lot on the drawing.
So, one of them marks the wheel outline, and the other one marks the outline of the vehicle itself, so when the tires turn, the outside of the vehicle doesn't exactly match up with the tires.
The width, they never stay the same width? They're not in the same width, the front tires, on the drawing. They come real narrow, and they go real wide, and they come real narrow. So, that's why I was just curious about that, because I didn't, when I see that truck go through there, it was just odd to see the front tires can actually become narrow and then go wide. So, I just want to make sure that a fire truck can get through this parking lot, since you're using that as a reason for why you want to maintain those parking spaces. I want to understand the emergency vehicle drawing you provided.
Yeah, so, we use a software called Vehicle Tracking. It's a software that comes with AutoCAD that we use, and we dimension the truck based on the axle widths, axle separations, and the code, and all the design guidelines that Arvada Fire Department sends us. And that's all vetted through the Fire Department and the Engineering Department. And it's, I can't really speak to why it looks like that without it in front of me, but I might be able to help you out if...
Yeah, I've just never seen that before. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but I was just curious, because if we could, going back, those six spaces, I still don't, I don't know why. Because then we would need no exception on the property, and I still don't get it, because even your drainage is just a tap into our existing storm. You're not doing any detention on-site or anything, so that doesn't make sense to me either, so.
Well, I believe we also have setback, landscaping setback requirements. So, from the street, we have to be 20 feet back with our improvements, I believe? If that's correct, maybe?
Yeah, so they are meeting and exceeding all the other requirements. You know, it's just this one, and we kind of agree with the, you know, with you guys, that the site is overparked, however, you know, it is a larger site, and they are meeting the rest of the requirements, and landscaping it very well.
And maybe you can answer the question for me, is if, say, they took away the six spots by the ATM, scooted everything over to the right just a little bit, and kind of met the requirement to the setback of 100 feet, do you know by any chance what other exceptions would pop up, or would it be fully conformant?
They would potentially have to ask for then, because they technically have three frontages. Even from Kendrick Street, that's a front setback, which is a deeper setback. So, they would potentially eat into that then, and then have to have an exception on that side. And we're more comfortable with supporting an exception to the variance from the center line of Candelas Parkway than from a property line, because in our mind, they're already meeting the setback from the property line, and that setback from the center line of Candelas Parkway is pretty, it's not necessarily needed at this point.
Okay, and so, thank you, that's great. Maybe somebody can teach me about this whole firefighter thing later, because I don't understand how axles can do that.
Yeah, and they do, just, they have reviewed these plans and given their approval as well.
I figured they did, yeah, I figured they did, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Chase Bank at Candelas Preliminary, let me start that over. I move that Chase Bank at Candelas Preliminary Development Plan, generally located at the northeast corner of West 91st Place and Candelas Parkway, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval? All votes cast, passes seven to zero. Thank you, congratulations. Look forward to having another successful project up in Candelas. Next, I will open the public hearing on Bear Mountain Accessories Preliminary Development Plan, generally located at the southwest corner of West 67th Avenue and Fig Street. Mr. Devon?
Rob Smetana, Planning Manager, will begin this presentation.
The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for a 75,000-square-foot warehouse and office building to be utilized by Bear Mountain Accessories. The applicant is requesting modifications from development standards for a reduced front setback for the parking area, for a reduction in the number of interior parking lot trees, and for elimination of a small number of parking lot landscape islands. Staff is recommending approval of the PDP with the modifications requested based upon the criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the PDP at their December 4th meeting with the elimination of the modification to reduce the number of interior parking lot trees. I have received the signed posting log and affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance to give a presentation and answer questions. Senior Planner Jake Nicholls is also here, and he will give a... Senior Planner Jake Nicholls is also here, and he will give, if you don't mind, a brief explanation regarding staff support for the parking lot tree modification.
Very good. First of all, the posting log and affidavit and mailing will be made part of the record. And let's hear a little bit, and I know we saw some information with regard to the discussion on the parking lot trees.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Interior parking lot trees are required based on the area of the parking lot, which includes both parking spaces and drive aisles. This requirement becomes more difficult to comply with when you have a single loaded drive aisle or where you have a required fire lane that goes all the way around the entire building. In other words, as the ratio of drive aisles to parking space, spaces increase, compliance becomes more difficult. Now, having one of these scenarios on a, on a site is not that uncommon, and it's not that difficult to overcome in terms of compliance, where it becomes difficult in situations like Bear Mountain where both scenarios are present. To compensate for the reduced parking lot trees, the PDP includes trees directly adjacent to the north and east drive aisles in excess of the minimum required. While these trees cannot technically be counted as interior parking lot trees, the result is more trees in closer proximity to the drive aisle than you'd find in a typical double-loaded drive aisle where you have a landscape island for every twelve spaces. Therefore, staff feels that this proposal meets the intent of the requirement, which is to screen parking lots and reduce the apparent size. Therefore, staff continues to support the proposed modification, and I'd be happy to expand on any of that if you'd like.
Why don't we wait until we get testimony and we'll then open it up for council questions, and if they have any on that issue, they will direct them. Anybody who wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand, swear firm testimony you're about to give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. If you'll state your name and address and make your presentation.
Good evening, my name is Casey Adranya. My address is sixty-one, sixty-two West Cross Drive in Littleton. All right. Okay, just to begin, just to give a general vicinity of the location, we're at the corner of Fig Street and what will be Sixty-seventh Ave that will be built out as a part of, in concurrence with our project, will be the construction of Sixty-seventh Avenue. So this shows a detail of the current lot configuration, which includes four existing lots. This also shows just kind of the general dimensions of Sixty-seventh as it will be built in concurrence with our project. You know, currently, Sixty-seventh is being shown as a, as a cul-de-sac, dead-end cul-de-sac, but I do believe that there are, are future plans that it would connect through to Indiana. So combining the four lots, it gives us a combination of five-point-eight total acres. Here's just a general site plan layout that shows the access will have one southern curb-cut access drive off of Fig Street to the south. This will primarily, well, this will be the only truck access onto the site. So along the south face of the building are the truck docks, so, you know, larger semi-trucks would come in off of Fig, you know, back into their spots and then come out of that fig. Then the access off of Sixty-seventh Drive will be more, more for the pedestrian, personal vehicle traffic to come to the parking and small, just personal vehicles parking to the north and east side of the site. So here's our landscape plan, just gives you a little bit of a view of kind of what Jake was describing. We have, you know, somewhat of a non-traditional parking lot, which you'll see a lot kind of in industrial uses, where, you know, it's a single-loaded parking that kind of stretches the perimeter of the building. You know, one, one positive of this is it doesn't consolidate hard surfaces into one large area, so it's more stretches it out along a narrow pathway. And for the overall site, we are adding seventeen additional trees than code would provide, which a lot of those are along the north, north and east drive aisles, which would certainly, you know, kind of help with the heat island effect and just kind of contribute to adding trees. In our, in our opinion, it's, it is, is meeting the intent of the code of, you know, breaking up hard surface with landscaped trees. Then just a general look at the architecture and elevations. Oftentimes, the challenge with big industrial buildings is, you know, figuring out ways to articulate and break up the mass, so utilizing vertical and horizontal changes with colors and a lot of reveals and patterns. And also, our plan undulates along the north face as well to help break up the facade a little bit, as well as height differences in the parapets to also just try and break down, break down some of the scale for, for what is a, is a fairly, fairly large, about a seventy-five-thousand-square-foot industrial building. Here's just kind of the overall floor plan. Facility Bear Mountain is a GM parts accessory supplier to most of the GM and Chevy dealerships around, around town. So the majority of this space will be used for warehousing and distribution of GM parts and accessories. With, with also a portion of office, about ten thousand square feet will be for office uses. And here's kind of a quick, just an enlarged view of the floor plans of those, a little second floor area just with offices and support functions for the facility. So that, that really concludes the general. Just kind of a side note that I do think is important for you guys to hear is, you know, our, our experience in working with the staff of our VADA has been very pleasant and refreshing. We, you know, there were some several challenges throughout the project, you know, kind of with the, just coordinating the construction of Sixty-seventh along with the progression of our development. Obviously, we're dependent on the construction of Sixty-seventh and, you know, everyone, engineers and planners were great to work with. And just having, having a schedule that's laid out from the very beginning of the project, you know, all, you know, knowing what our dates were from the very beginning and having a predictable scenario laid out from the very beginning was just critical. And, and for our side of things, we're trying to coordinate so many different things, that's just, just huge for us. And so I just wanna just say that about staff, very, very great to work with, so. And that concludes, so...
Very good. Is there anyone that would like to provide any additional testimony on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions, just to make sure I'm clear. The, the building, as we see it here, the, the north elevation, that's the entry point for the employees on the, on the north and northeast corner.
That's correct.
And so truck traffic then for trucks entering and leaving on the south side of the building and out to Fig Street?
That's correct.
Okay. And how much, how much space is utilized on the second floor for offices?
It's only about twenty-five-hundred square feet.
So, like twenty-five-hundred feet on the first floor and a second floor above it?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, there's, there's about seven thousand square feet on the first floor, and then about another twenty-five-hundred square feet on the second floor.
And then the rest of the building is...
The rest of the building, yes, is racking storage.
Racking, so...
Yep, correct.
Warehouse all the rest of the way.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure I had that clear in mind.
Yep.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. And this may be a question for staff, but why do we require a parking island every twelve spots? What's the purpose of that?
It is really to break up long, unbroken rows of parking spaces and to kind of create the appearance of, of smaller parking lots and smaller drive aisles, so it's really just to keep the monotony of those long, unbroken drive aisles you might see in some of the older developments.
Yeah, no, I've seen it before, but I just know that it also sometimes creates a problem with snow removal.
It does. There are other benefits too, shade, heat island effect, aesthetics, but you, you are correct, it can create problems with snow removal and other obstacles.
Pedaling and icing and all that kind of stuff, so, just, okay, thank you. That was really my only question, so, well...
Ms. Ford?
So I just have this question I have to ask about the architecture of the building. The design that's coming out of the building on the side there? So one of the first things that I thought about when I saw that design, I liked it, but one of the first things that I thought about was, is that it would become a home for pigeons, and they would make life miserable for the employees walking into the building. And then not having any expertise in design and civil engineering, but I'm wondering if that wouldn't create water drop dripping off that area and create problems later on for, you know, if we have storms or whatever?
Right. Yeah, no, that's a good point. About the pigeons, I mean, that, that's a very good point, that...
You know why I asked that question? Because we have a complex in our VADA that actually had problems with pigeons, and the architecture was such over-the-doorways that the pigeons were hanging out and they were just constantly dropping.
Right.
And it became a real problem and they had to fix it. And so when I saw that, it was like, wow, that's a great design, but it seemed to me like there could be some problems with...
Right, no, I actually, yeah, no, I mean, I guess, I'll humbly say that's kind of the first time we've thought of that, or that's been brought up. And I guess the other thing that brought up to me when you said that was, to combat that is you bring up the spikes, right? And so now you have kind of a cool element, but then you have like spikes on it, so, I mean, I mean, actually, it's something that I'm going to bring up to my owner and take credit for myself.
Wait a minute, it's on record.
Right, no, it is a good point.
I, I just wanted to bring it up for you to think about, because it's...
And, and right now, it's a C-channel, so it's, it's, it's closed on the backside and it is open up. But, I mean, one thing that, that may help is creating actually a tube steel, so there's not that ledge either, but then they would be on top as well. One benefit of it that, that may help that situation is it's not directly abutted to the building, there's actually probably a six-inch gap between the building and the face, and that's due to, so moisture can pass through the face as it would as if it weren't there at all. So that would also stop, you know, any sort of snow from building up and being caught between the building face and the top ledge of it, but...
I mean, we don't get a lot of rain here either, but, you know...
Right, no, yeah.
It's just something to think about.
I think it is, yeah, and I don't, yeah, I don't believe it's, that element is, is necessarily hitting or not, you know, one of the architectural requirements necessarily. So that's something that I'll have to bring up to my owner and we'll talk about all that we discussed, because the last thing I would want is for it to be brought up, hey, this is cool, but it's a total hazard for us, okay, and a maintenance nightmare, so, I think it's something, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, I, I was just curious why, you know, it was away from the building, because, you know, it's cool and everything, but I...
Yeah, your thinking functionally, which is great, yeah, no, that's good.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I think all our pigeons are in downtown. We don't have very many here.
Just keep them out there.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, they're all at her house, because she's feeding them.
If you build them, they will come, yeah.
You should make bat caves out of those things.
That's true, yeah.
We have ducks out in the west side of town.
Oh, that's where all the, the upper-scale birds go. I totally forgot what my questions were, because we're on this whole bird thing.
They don't care about that.
Oh, the trucks, so it's only about ten to fifteen trucks, you think, a week?
Correct.
And, and, and where do they all kind of go, like Ward?
What's that?
Where do they all go? Do they go down sixty-four towards Indiana? Do they, I mean, where's your, where's your distribution usually head out? Just curious, do you know?
You know, it is very dispersed, but...
Like Indiana?
Um, I would say, I would say Fig.
Well, they go to Fig to sixty-fourth, right?
Right, but then from there, where do they go?
But there's no highway, right? The closest state highway is sixty-fourth, which is Indiana. Ward is Highway seventy-four? I don't know, seventy-two, close.
You should know that.
I'd wanna say maybe like Ward, possibly?
So we'll have more eighteen-wheeler traffic on, on Ward?
Yeah.
But you're only saying it's ten to fifteen a week?
Yeah, yeah, it is limited.
Because you have twenty-seven stalls, I think I counted, right?
Well, those are, and so the other aspect of this, not, aspect of this building was just setting it up for exit strategy, so, so actually, the, the, as, as it will be built, it will only have thirteen dock doors, and the other half, they're actually knockout panel doors.
Oh, okay, so you're not using them all day one?
No, and, and those are all concrete panels, but, you know, we just set it up, you know, for exit strategy, so those could easily be kind of knocked out and, and future dock doors added.
Okay, so it's not, it's not planned?
So right now, there's only thirteen dock doors.
Okay. Okay, so I take back that whole widening road problem, so I'll take that one back, because that's, that these are, I mean, these, this is a good problem to have for us. I, I like that you're bringing industrial opportunities into the, the city, so...
Yeah.
The other question I had was, I noticed on your first floor, it looks like you had a training facility. See, I see a truck in the training room, it looks like.
Right, yeah, so this, this is a function that is maybe used, they'll maybe have these functions once, once a month, if that, to where, you know, basically, service members from GM and Chevy facilities from all across the region will come to this facility when there's new accessories for Chevy vehicles, and that's where they'll just kind of demonstrate, you know, how some of these new features kind of correspond with the vehicles and whatnot.
So you will have training and visitors coming into the city during that time, maybe once a month?
Right, yes.
How many, how, I don't know, I didn't count the chairs.
Uh, there's about ninety-four, I believe, spaces there. But, you know, a lot of these, you know, again, it's, it's a very rare occasion that they do have these big events, but when they do, yeah, it's, it's built for up to ninety at this point.
And then, I just wanna confirm, how many people would be working in this facility?
You know, probably between fifteen to twenty-five.
Okay, okay, no, that's great, no?
Max, yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones?
I'm just ready to make a motion.
You may proceed.
I move that Bear Mountain Accessories Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the southwest corner of West Sixty-seventh Avenue and Fig Street be approved subject to the attached updated condition of approval, and this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. I'll be supporting the motion. There were efforts some time back to convert a lot of this property over here to residential purposes, and city council opposed that effort, recognizing that we don't have much land left for industrial uses, and we have other industrial uses in the area that frankly are not always compatible with residential. So I think this proposal, this application and what it brings to us is exactly what the city council wanted to see, and I, for one, based upon the seven-zero vote, congratulate you and look forward to this project moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Good job with your fire truck lines, they were straight.
Did they? I was worried about that.
I looked at yours, compared them.
We'll, we'll check out the different computer programs, because I think that's what it comes down to.
I worry about the axle job on the other one.
Uh, public comment, any member of the public wish to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council comments. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, since this will be, I believe, the last time we meet until after the new year, and encourage everybody who can this holiday season to please go skiing. It's fantastic up there right now.
And if you need to rent skis, Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I'd like to echo that too, you know, I want to thank the staff for another great year.
great year. I can't say enough of what a great place we all work, and we have the pleasure of coming every Monday night, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays, and be safe, and spend a lot of time with family.
Mr. Jones?
Ditto. But I'd also like to express my appreciation to our first responders, our police and fire and medical services. Unfortunately, this time of year, they're often very active, especially on Christmas Day and New Year's Day, and appreciate the time and effort and energy that they put into keeping us safe and happy and healthy, and want to, again, express my appreciation to the staff. Mr. Devon, you and your team do phenomenal things every single day, and we appreciate that, and Mr. Day, that we really do appreciate the city attorney. Thank you.
Well, it's, obviously, council unanimously wishes everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and for the holidays, it's, it's a special time of year, family is so very important, and I really appreciate my family up here. It's a, it's a great council who work very hard, very diligently for our citizens. I look forward to the opportunities and challenges that we'll conquer together in 2019. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of all staff, we also wish the council a very happy holidays and safe holidays over the next couple of weeks before we see you again as a group. When we do see you again, we have a business meeting on January the 7th, and then on the 14th, we'll have a demographics update, both for our community and also for the state. Demographer will be here, and the purpose of that presentation will be to give you a look at our demographics immediately prior to the city council retreat on January 18th. So, we look forward to the challenges ahead in the new year, and appreciate your input, and appreciate your support, day in and day out, for the work that we do in our, for our community.
And Ms. Ford?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that we're going to have a speak-up, our VADA meeting in January, January 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And, excuse me, since I don't often compliment this wonderful staff that we have, I do want to compliment you two and tell you how much it's a pleasure to work with you, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Right, and here's to a G-line in early 2019. We are adjourned.